... meeting and thanks to everyone for attending and we'll have a call to order and pledge if Mike, if you do that and Robert, you're in the house, good. Robert will do our prayer for us. So if you don't mind.
Reminds me of how you gave this first thing. Every father is coming to you in the state of the Lord. So thank you for this blessed day that you've given us, thank you for the protection watching over us. I may ask that I continue to pray. I ask that you bless this country, Father. Bless that you do with us in this meeting tonight, with the things discussed here, the benefits of the residents of the present. In the Mount Pleasant, we ask that you bless and watch over us as we leave this place and go our respective homes. You lead and guide and direct us. We thank you for praying in Jesus' name.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please, ma'am. Here. Right now, she's probably gonna be here, I'm guessing. Just running a little late.
David?
Here.
Eric Harvey?
Here.
Willie Alderson?
Here.
Have a form.
Thank you, ma'am. Number four, approval and correction of minutes from prior meetings. We have the study session from October the 14th and the regular commission meeting from the 19th. So I'll entertain a motion after everybody's had an opportunity to review them.
There were a couple of Mr. Aldersons and Mr. Graham Berries, and we corrected that. Otherwise, everything needs to be fine.
I make a motion to accept the study session from October 14, 2021.
Second.
You want to do the regular meeting with that, too?
Yes.
Yes.
Also accept the regular meeting October 19, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Oh.
A opposed, motion carries. All right, awards, presentations, and appointments. First one we have tonight, and it's quite honestly a pleasure to do this, is for the Mount Pleasant art students. And commissioners, if y'all'd like to pull them up, let's do this for all these great people here this afternoon. And we really do appreciate all of you coming to live. I will personally thank Mike and Pat Green, these two gentlemen right here. They're originally from Mount Pleasant, actually, Quarters. I'll say that, Quarters Chapel. And we can't thank them enough for what they did with that. We congratulate them on the new art studio here in Mount Pleasant. Look at the benefit it's already bringing guys. So thank you. Getting children involved is priceless for us. So thank you very much. Mike Mitchell, we'd like to recognize, thank you, Mike, for all the work, due to your in here. So we got you covered. Whereas the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant are rightfully proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city. And whereas Mount Pleasant elementary, middle, and high school students have been given the honor of being the first artists to exhibit in the Mount Pleasant Record Art Gallery. To our knowledge, this will be the first ever art gallery to exist strictly as a space to exhibit art in Mount Pleasant 197 years. Truly historic event that owners and brothers like in that green, who were born and raised in Mount Pleasant, believe belongs to the young artists in the programs of Nicole Rich's Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Liz Keen from the Mount Pleasant Middle School Division Performing Arts, and Whitney Harings of the Mount Pleasant High School. Whereas to take the honor of step further, the brothers enlisted veteran artist Warren Green, the curator of the prior art gallery at Columbia State, Rusty Summerfield, as jurors who decided the first place trophy winner, purchase award each grade division, elementary school, middle school, and high school. Whereas those winners were Ann Lee Sandro, Mount Pleasant High School champion, Whitney Harings of Mount Pleasant High School art teacher, and Dr. Ryan Jackson, executive lead principal, Alex Sutcliffe, Mount Pleasant Middle School Division Performing Arts champion, Liz Keen, Mount Pleasant Middle School Division Performing Arts teacher, and Melissa Art Reader Principal, Jonah Thomas, Mount Pleasant Elementary School champion, Nicole Rich, Mount Pleasant Elementary School art teacher, and Julie Temple principal. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant is mayor and board of commissioners wishing to join in honoring these outstanding individuals, their accomplishments at this time. Now therefore, I Bill White, Mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, who hereby proclaim, Tuesday, November 16, 2021, is art students' day. We call upon all the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant, to join with us in recognizing these outstanding students for their achievements. Thanks to each of you very, very much. Y'all have this?
I would love for those students to get up. Mayor White, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we'll be happy to.
If you were in the exhibit, please come up there with Mayor White.
And we have enough copies of them for every family. You have copies, right?
Everything.
Talking missions, so we're happy to be here. I'm gonna take the sticky note off your copy before we take the picture.
Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Kate, congratulations. It's a nice day to everyone.
Well, ladies, there's a copy of everybody's only one.
Hi. Here is the arrangement. Okay. Yes. All right, the next thing we have, and I want to bring this to everybody's attention right quick. Ms. Willie ran over there with me this afternoon, as well as Kate. They had an enduring heroes dinner tonight at Mount Pleasant Rehab for all of their workers that have gone through heck over the last couple of years with COVID and everything else that's been going on. And it was a nice dinner. We stuck our heads in right quick. Didn't stay for dinner, looked good. But we did a quick proclamation today, just for everybody's information, just thanking them. They asked for this, so.
They just went, yeah, just last night.
Yeah, last night. All right, proclamation for art students is done. The next in is swearing in a police officer, Ellison Bridges. If you would come forward, please, sir. Even better. And I know that Eric has the pleasure of having him. Eric is a teacher, so I asked all the commissioners to come up. So if you would repeat after me, please, sir. I, Ellison M. Bridges.
I, Ellison M. Bridges.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Do solemnly swear to uphold.
Do solemnly swear to uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The state of Tennessee.
The state of Tennessee.
And the ordinances in charge.
And the ordinances in charge.
With the city of Mount Pleasant.
The city of Mount Pleasant.
I will faithfully execute my duties.
I will faithfully execute my duties.
In accordance with the general orders.
In accordance with the general orders.
Of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. Thank you, Kate. Congratulations.
And you're all are both safe for the rest of the meeting.
That'd be really good.
They out of here.
Mike, Pat, thank you again.
Thank you.
It's great to see you. I am too. It's just my color.
Yeah, it looks normal.
It's even better.
I guess they leaving, you would leave it?
No, no. We got about 10 or 15 more.
Yeah, we got several. All right, we'll continue on with our meeting. Number six, completion review of unfinished
business from prior meeting. A, ordinance 2021-1082, a public hearing, and this will be the final reading. An ordinance declining to amend Title 14, zoning and land use control, Chapter 2, zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, in the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein by rezoning property from neighborhood commercial to high-density residential. Again, this was a decline by the planning commission.
In the October meeting. So Mayor and commissioners, a public hearing to, anytime the planning commission doesn't need any rezoning, you have to have it in front of you as well. So this is something, though, not only this particular piece of property, but others that have come in front of it in neighborhood commercial, the planning commission has asked Robert's office to take a look at looking at language in there on different things that would be appropriate. And they are doing that, and that will be on the agenda in December. But right now, under the current, this was declined, and you need to take action on that.
Okay. Again, this is a public hearing. If anybody'd like to speak on this, please come forward. Please let the minute show know what to offer, too. All right, entertain a motion on ordinance 2021-1082.
I move to decline according to the planning commission notes due to the zoning as it is now, and proceeded looking at all the prospects for the future, and accept ordinance 2021-1082 in the future.
We got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Accept, accept the motion, accept this ordinance.
I just, I just did the same motion from our last meeting.
Okay.
That was in the minutes.
Is that in the future?
Yes, in the future, that we would accept it once things happen in the future.
But this ordinance right here is for this, this.
This particular.
Right, and we. That's the only thing we can take action on today, is this parcel, declining to rezone this parcel.
This parcel.
Okay, so I move that we decline according to the zoning as it is now.
Okay.
And we'll worry about the future later.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
A.
Opposed, motion carries. B, ordinance 2021-1083. Again, this is a public hearing in the final reading. An ordinance to amend Title 5, Chapter 6 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, dealing with purchasing, repealing the existing Chapter 6, and adopting a new Chapter 6, updating the purchasing rules, regulations, and procedures.
And Mayor and commissioners, I think you've got an email from me that I was about to ask you to defer this till the December 21st meeting.
Yes.
This runs in conjunction with the internal control policy. Just make sure we have it right. Well, that's my fault of not being able to get to it before we sent everything out on Friday, so.
So this will be deferred until December's meeting.
I have a good question for you, Corey. If we advertise public hearing, second reading, do we re-advertise? Since it will be on the agenda again in December.
I think if you defer it at this meeting, it moves to public hearing. But you can republish it if you want to.
Okay.
They will need a motion. They might as well.
Do we have a motion to defer this?
Mayor, I make a motion to defer ordinance 2021-1083 to December 21st.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got seconds. All those in favor?
A.
Opposed, motion carries. Monthly report for mayor, the only thing I've got is not this Saturday, but next Saturday is the shop small day here in Mount Pleasant. I think they're expecting a pretty good crowd. I hope they have it. We're also having another cruise in the last of the year from noon until 2:00. And. Yeah. So if you could get out and just go shake a hand or two or whatever, and just, I know I'm gonna be in town for part of it anyway. So that's really all I've got. Number eight, monthly financial and budget report, please.
Oh, you should have received that today in emails. Oh, we have just a quick update. We have completed our role transition over to the new server. It is up and going. A few glitches, but most have been able to work out a month or two. So thanks to Michael Haywood for helping us get that all moved over. We were last minute praying, hoping that the server, the old server would not die on us before they were ready to change that over. So we did get that done this week. We do appreciate the public's patience and all we had to close for that time period. And also for Mary Lyndister and all of them, they all worked out all the D's. We do appreciate that. And does anybody have any questions on the biannual report?
Everything looked good to me. That being said, entertain a motion for acceptance.
I make a motion, mayor, to approve a monthly report.
Got a motion? We have a second?
I second.
Got a second. All those in favor?
A.
Opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
I just want to remind everybody that this Friday is the employee meal that you're invited to attend if you can at noon. Also reminding you of the holidays next week that we have on Thursday and Friday. I mentioned at the last meeting last month that we had a letter of intent on the spec building in Cary Glen, and that passed through the Murray County Industrial Development Board. So the next step would be for that to go to the county commission as far as the sale. And I think it's a really good prospect there. We also have a planning commission coming up in December, more than 100 new homes on the agenda. So we're starting to feel everything that we've been saying, we know is coming. I mentioned at the study session, all the power upgrades that Apple Haywood's done with AG Department to get us where we lose our power, we can last quite a bit longer. So we appreciate that. But those were just some highlights of what's been going on.
Okay, any questions, Kate?
The blasting in Sugar Creek, did that start today?
Yes.
Well, they're supposed to call me and tell me when they're gonna blast. Did they let us know that?
Yes, ma'am. I thought you got forward the text. I'm sorry.
I was.
We heard something at the middle school.
And we sent a text out last week, and then they hadn't done the proper 811.
Right.
And so they didn't blast, but no, I didn't.
Yeah, I got a text earlier today. A couple people was tagged in it, and I thought you was tagged in it. That's my fault for not getting it. Getting that further up the chain would be sent out, but we're gonna send it out on the city.
Yeah.
So everybody knows.
So I wasn't aware of that, but we'll, most of me, people will still maybe be upset about it. At least when something happens, you're not like, what was that? You have a little bit of notice of what it was. So we'll make sure, we'll get our junk on the road, make sure we at least start texting people that it's happening. I did not know here that one today, but it didn't happen.
It was about lunchtime. We were all eating lunch at two o'clock.
Will all of A-Town cake be going on our sewer system, or?
It's all in the plans.
All of it, yep.
All of it's defined.
Only reason I knew is I rode over, I'm riding over there every day to see what kind of progress they're making. And they ran me off. They wouldn't even let me get up to the cul-de-sac end to go up. And I don't ever drive on the property, but I always ride up, just kind of see. And they went. And I knew right then, I bet they'd get ready to push the trigger.
And probably most of you know, but all the blasting is all permitted through the state. So we don't have anything to do with that. All we're trying to do is let people know.
Hey, Kate, I have a question. When are we gonna start hiring for Kelly's position? Are we already hiring?
Well, we're changing duties within, and you know, we've hired a new service rep, but we're trying to change duty in HR and moving payroll to finance, which it always should have been. And so we're, and what we're doing is doing everything on a temporary basis, and then we want to come back to you and say, is this working or is not?
Or we gotta get somebody.
Yeah. We need more people in finance for sure, though. We definitely are worried about that.
I just appreciate what they did in trying to do, you know, just seeing if it would work with what we got.
Maria's taking on quite a bit of HR for us and wants to, and Sonia has taken the payroll to finance and doing a lot of our payables for us. And we have a new customer service rep. So right now, it's working. We just want to make sure to stay it that way.
Any other questions for Kate? All right, number 10, special reports from other city departments or committees if applicable. Waste water.
The only report we have is wastewater. And unfortunately, the report you have in front of you says that the Cured and Placed Installation at the Frontline Project was gonna start yesterday. And the company, S and P Liner, has a piece of equipment down, and we just got word yesterday that they are not gonna be able to start. So they're not sending their men for this because they have a piece of equipment that's called boiler, that is down. And so they did, I think, at the last meeting, I told you that they did get a six-month extension because of all the ionitis in the pipes. We have a plan, a contingency plan to address that if that continues. So I wish I could tell you that we're moving forward, but right now, we're stalling, waiting to see when they can get this piece of equipment working again. Everything else is right on schedule. We should be, I'm hoping by December, you'll be approving some. We open bids in December, don't we? We open bids in December for the large part of our sewer projects that you've already advertised. So that should be in front of you in the December meeting, those bids.
Well, we're not having no problems or nothing out at the.
No, it's just all part of the process, and it's taking longer than we want.
And it's supply.
A lot of it is to, yeah.
Sitting out in the harbor.
That causes the layup until now. And then this is something new.
All right, nothing from the gas system?
No.
Okay.
Right there.
All right, number 11, new business. Ordinance 2021-1084, it is the first reading, an ordinance levying a privilege tax upon the occupancy in any hotel or motel, or any place in which rooms, lodging, or accommodations are furnished to transits for consideration. And that will be a 4% fee.
That's a max allowed, and that's what I recommend. And well, this is something that we wanted to do, just get any kind of tax off the hotel. I believe there'll be another hotel in Mount Pleasant within the next few years. And then the state has made it easier for us to do this. You used to have to go through a few steps to get it done. And now this ordinance is all we need. So it's the first reading, but we would put it at the max at 4% and then begin collection once it passes.
So.
Includes Airbnb's as well.
And then would there be a county tax on top of that, or is it?
I think the county already has the hotel tax.
We don't want that.
We're allowed to do this.
Okay.
And this, specifically, though, the tax you collect has to go through, go to things like tourism, which would possibly definitely benefit parks and rec. It's not, you know, you can't go Penn Street with it. It's specific. It's supposed to help with your tourism.
Awesome. Do we know what the tax rate is for the county on the hotel?
Do you have the next read?
Cool, thank you.
All right, any other questions regarding the hotel tax? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Move that we accept ordinance 2021-1084 as presented.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Have a second. All those in favor? A. Opposed, motion carries. Ordinance 2021-1085, again, this is the first reading, an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 1 of the Municipal Code relating to livestock and domestic fowl within the city limits.
Mayor, officials, we discussed this at the third session somewhat. This is my recommendation. It's been kind of problematic process that we've been going through. And I would still, if you're moving into the city, you shouldn't have the expectation of having livestock and chicken. If you look at the way that it's worded, and I'll let Corey chime in, that if you have five acres, it is allowed, but you still have to live up to how they're kept, and they can't be a nuisance, and things like that. And anybody that in the past few years, I've given written permission after talking to neighbors to have them, they basically can keep them unless they don't have them for 30 days.
30 days.
The way it's written. So I don't know if we're getting feedback from the community on this, but it seemed like this was, everybody kind of had the same feeling on this at the third session.
So basically, no chickens unless they were already permitted, or the property is five acres or more, or it's zoned agriculture. And I know we don't have agriculture zone, so if we need to change that language to something else, if there's a specific zone that you don't want to.
I think Ag is now residential one, right? And so if you got the five acres, I think that covers it. I don't know if you want to change the language based on that, but Ag is now residential one, R1.
Well, we could probably just take it out. I understand if land that's zoned agriculture, we can't have this regulation on it. So we don't have any.
Okay, which I, Kate, I did have, I did have, I guess, a lady to come to me. It's been, I guess, a year ago, about cows on her property. So if you got five acres or more, you know, okay.
That's fine. And then, you know, I went through a lot of the different cities and ordinances to try to see kind of some examples. And, you know, one of my questions that I would have for y'all is, so if you have the five acres, do you want any other rules on that five acres? Like, okay, if you have this five acres, can you put the chicken coop like right on the edge? You know, are there any sort of parameters, or do you just want to exclude those people altogether from these apartments?
What about pigs? Because it's considering the livestock.
Yeah, so I put every animal that I could think of in here.
No, I'm talking about if they got five acres, can they have a pig?
Yes, yes.
It's on here. It's wine.
Okay.
Wine, goat, sheep, horses, mules, cows, turkey, donkeys.
It's the five acres.
Okay.
But it also says must be kept or maintained in a manner which does not constitute a nuisance, including fowl or offensive odors.
So what we did.
Good luck on pigs.
Yeah. So what we did, the reason, the thing that kind of got us started is the ordinance, or the resolution, or no, the ordinance, the way we have it now, just says this really like basic language, like no nuisance. And so we talked about giving guidance for what that is. So my question, I guess, to y'all to think about between this reading and next is, do you want to put any other guidance as far as what constitutes, or what doesn't constitute a nuisance on these people that have five acres or more?
To be distant from the neighbors.
As much as they live there.
I can't, I can't vote for it. And the reason I can't vote for it is because of the pig situation. I know a family that had, they had to deal with it. Finally, the people moved out. It was out on Enterprise Road. And they had the pigs left there on the main roof.
Yeah.
And it was terrible.
That was out of the county.
That was in the county, but that's what I'm saying. Oh, even if it's in the city, you know, I can just imagine what the smell would be like. So I mean, I'd have to say no on this, just for.
That smell could be considered a nuisance, for sure.
Yeah, but I mean, if it's in there, it'll take forever to get it out.
I mean, this is just kind of our first stab at it. So if there's changes you want to make.
There's no pigs.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know the property you're talking about, it was horrible.
It was, yes.
But it was in the county.
But I'm saying it, it can be in the city.
Oh, well, I, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know.
Do we currently have pigs in the city?
I know that in the past five years, there's been three pet pigs that I was aware of and um, a couple of them, when the neighbor said they didn't want the pig there, we had to tell them to have to get rid of the pig. Um, one was here that when I started, but that pig's gone too. I hate to be giving you the pig update, but that's, that's as far as I know on pigs. Right now I don't know of any in the city.
Another example.
Currently no.
Another example I saw in these ordinances was an exception for house pigs.
Yes.
Well, that's what they were talking about.
Okay.
Well, one was a huge black outdoor, one was a small like wilbur from.
Show this way.
So I mean, there's, like I said, this was the first, you know, first stab at it.
Any feedback you have, do you think, think on it or if, if your constituents give you feedback, we're willing to listen to it. First stab at it.
Do we have a motion for ordinance 2021-1085?
I would, I would make it if you included pigs.
We, we gonna have time to do that, but you can't, the way it's written as of tonight is what we gotta vote on.
No.
Okay.
But we've got another 30 days to make another stab at it.
So we can pass, we can pass the ordinance as it is tonight.
Make changes.
Make changes. Danny is correct. All right, I'm good with it. I move that we accept.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead. No.
The enforcement lies to me. So I would only request, if y'all done whatever decision y'all made, if you are allowing the process for that, just go through a permit process. It don't need to be just random.
Right.
I have to give them the okay or the no okay. Um, I would prefer a process and we do have an application, a working application, uh, that I've drafted myself. Uh, it would have to include all of the requirements, but I would only make that request. If, if that enforcement's gonna lie to me, then I would make the request that we have a process in place.
Which is the process in the ordinance?
And you're talking about the, the, the process for five acres or more.
That's the only thing you're talking about is five acres or more because we're not gonna have it under five.
Well, unless somebody complains that it's a nuisance.
Right.
But even then they wouldn't get a permit. That would be.
That's, that's right. It's nonpermissible.
Getting a permit that was already in place. So that's, so we need to fix the language.
We can talk further on the best way to do that.
Cory, I'd like to add one more question. If, if this is passed tonight, and this just say, somebody says, well, hey, I better get my pigs in now. So then if we came back next month and changed it, they would be getting grandfathered in, correct?
There's already, there's already a process that says they need permission.
Yeah, so.
And, and what we've viewed in the past is we've asked neighbors if they agree or disagree. We send letters.
I know that, but I'm saying, you know, this here could get into what the, to bring this up. From the last couple of months, you know, it doesn't matter if they have their.
They didn't get permission, they're, it's not legal to have it.
If he's, if they, if they applied for it right now, is that what you're saying?
If they, in the past, didn't get permission, it's not legal either.
We did our beer.
Based on an application. So you're asking if they applied for it right now. Um, then our typical process is if there's a pending ordinance, then we go with what?
It's current.
It's current, yeah. So, but the way this is written right now, it says if it was approved prior to December 21st. So if y'all like or dislike that date, I put that date because that would be what second reading would be. Just to, to try to clear out those questions about what, what happens to chickens that are previously approved or.
And existing one does, does allow us to say yes or no, you can't.
All right, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We've got a second, all those, we better do roll call. Roll call, please.
Harvey?
Yes.
Billy Alderson?
Yes.
Phil White?
Yes.
Mike Davis?
No.
Those three to one, motion carries.
All right, thank y'all. All right, next we have resolution 2020, 2021-29, a resolution authorizing application for certified local government status with the Tennessee Historical Commission and the National Park Service. And this is as much as anything, so we can get our historic district to sound.
Yeah, getting this certified local government, um, mayor commissioner allows us to get extra points when we submit grants to the state, also makes more grants available to us and allows them to assist us in this whole process. So we knew from the very beginning that the next step after getting your historical zoning commission started, the next thing you want to do is apply for the certified local government. And that's what we're doing with this resolution. And I think the mayor has seen the paperwork that goes along with this that we have to think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I knew this was not gonna happen overnight and that's fine. We're doing this the right way because it's, uh, that group could wind up with some of, some authority. Uh, not much, but they'll have some. I gave them pretty strict marching orders when we set that up, that you don't need to be telling what color they need to paint their shutters or the front door. Cause that's the reason in Columbia, they call it an astar district. And that's what they call it.
Hmm.
So with that being said, entertain a motion on resolution 2021-29.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2021-29.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Got a number of seconds, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. E, resolution 2021-30, a resolution declaring certain real property owned by the city of Mount Pleasant and identified as about 1330 group E, partial 18.00 to 13 Olive Street as surplus.
Mayor commissioners, we've had this in front of you for a couple of months now. We're ready to surplus these properties that I'm assuming came to us through unpaid taxes. And both of them are non, this, this is a non-conforming law and we're gonna go, if it's approved, as surplus, what will be, um, advertising for sealed bids to bid on this. I would imagine the neighboring properties will be the ones that are interested.
Yeah. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Move that we accept resolution 2021-30.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. E, resolution 2021-31, and again, it is the same thing, but this is 218 Olive Street. Just down the street.
Exactly the, the same as what we just said, we will be declaring it as surplus and then we'll be doing sealed bids on it as well.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2021-31.
We've got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. F, resolution 2021-32, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant to join the state of Tennessee and other local governments as participants in the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement and approving the related settlement agreements, of which, Cory, I forwarded you earlier today, an email, two different emails that I got from them.
What you have in front of you, Mayor Commissioners, is the exhibit aid that goes with this resolution. Um, last month was approved, uh, that you have outside representation in this lawsuit, but there's been a small settlement that we have to sign off on. And Cory, I'll let you take it from there.
This is just part of the overall litigation. Um, the attorney that we hired described this as coffee budget money. Um, so I don't expect it to be a significant amount. In this thing, there's some percentages. I don't know how those translate, so I don't know what the total dollar amount is, but you're approving basically the mayor to accept this settlement. What happens is if we don't, we don't join this part, we don't get our percentage of this settlement. And it just goes to the counties and cities that did.
Kate, now we're looking at this earlier, Murray County gets 1.38%.
Just by looking at the percentages, I have to believe it's based on population.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I noticed several of those were like even less than point five.
Yeah, David said it's about 11%.
Yeah, there we go. So he has population. So, hey, if it's coffee money, it's coffee money.
Coffee money.
Mm-hmm. So with that being said, entertain a motion on resolution 2021-32.
Move that we accept 2021-32.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. G, resolution 2021-33, a resolution authorizing the city to accept funds from the downtown improvement grant.
Mayor Commissioners, we always refer to this as the facade improvement grant. That's when we got it, uh, years ago. And Donna Morente gives all the credit. She applied, she worked with the local businesses that want to improve their, uh, facades and many people that are applying to it. But the state that is awarding the $150,000 requires the money to flow through the municipality. And then we pay for the repairs once we have proof of the repairs. And there's no match to us as a city, but there's match to the, um, property owner. So if, I believe their match is 25% and there are extending circumstances where that can get lowered, but there's no match to the city. So, um, we are just basically funneling money through us and paying as we get the proof that the work's been done. And we need a resolution to allow that to happen. And that will be part of a budget amendment.
Does that, um, does the city decide, you know, the, the rate? You said, you know, there were circumstances that they look at to do with, does the city look at that or do they apply?
That, that Dana and the state would make the decision if the match is any less. There's really very little for us to do but pay a receipt that where everybody has stamped off and said work was done and it, it complied with everything.
Good deal.
Any other questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion on resolution 2021-33.
Make a motion to accept resolution 2021-33.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. H, bid award for local street repairs.
Mayor Commissioners, at the third session, we had this bid in front of you from Nipple Projects. They were the only bid and it was at 222,254. Uh, but they had it noted that they were doing, um, 130 feet of work, which seemed more than we thought. And we did meet the bidder out there on site last week and they were taking the culvert all the way up on private property, which was never our intent. So we had them rebid and since it's only bidder, um, we talked with Cory about the ability to do that. And then we also lifted up the sidewalk. So if some of you commissioners were out there, you saw how bad it was underneath. So you can see the new bid is not, it even stopped, now it's cheaper once they saw the condition underneath the street. Um, this would be a good opportunity when people come to you and tell you how bad our streets are. So if we would have just paid this spot, which is probably the size of my office in Loretta's, you can see what's underneath, it's costing $220. That's why we don't pay our street, because we know the problems that are underneath. But Cory, do you just want to comment on why we got one bid and we're able to have them relook at it and go ahead and award this bid?
Based on the purchasing ordinance or the purchasing rules that we have right now, it says that the city can, um, basically accept or decline bid based off of the best interest of the city. And also if there's any irregularity in the bid, you have the option to waive that. So I'm looking at this as that irregularity, they, they were the only bidder at all, but then they bid more than.
We asked, yeah.
More than we asked for. And so we asked for the correction. Um, and this is, I don't think we have to rebid it because we just fixed the issue. Yeah.
Cory, I have a question, probably shouldn't ask it, but, but when I was, you know, like I said last Thursday, when I was out on the site, there was an engineer there, I don't know who he was. It's just somebody we called in.
From Los Angeles.
Yes. And he said at that time to do it right, that we need to, to go further back. So if we don't do it right, does that put us in a position if they have a big flood there, that somebody can say, hey, y'all didn't do this right?
So not taking action in this case because it involves a street already gives the city liability, um, then taking action, you know, it needs to be the correct action to avoid any liability. I think what we've done, if this is the property that I'm remembering conversations about, taking all the efforts to make sure we're not impacting water.
Right.
More so than it all, I think that's why we're not going on private property.
Right. The defendant's veneer saying that we're not increasing flow.
Okay, I just wanna, you know, since I was told that or whatever, you know, if something came up, you know, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think that's the issue that, I know that's the issue that the engineers have talked about.
And what he's talking about is correct. If we want to fix all of the flooding issues, we don't have a stormwater program. We can adopt one. And in the next few months, when we're talking about, um, where we want to spend our money on infrastructure, um, we have a price tag, I think it's 30 million?
30.
30 million to fix our stormwater system.
I looked at it.
I just, you know, I just didn't want it to come back and say, hey, y'all knew this, we was taking a shortcut or whatever, you know.
We're looking at this as it impacts our street.
I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah.
Good question.
All right, entertain a motion to accept the bid.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, for resolution 2021-. Oh, I'm sorry, I backed up. On the, on the bid award for the local street repairs.
All right, perfect. All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
We have a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. I'm gonna ask Kate very briefly, please, uh, explain where we're getting this money. We're not.
No, I'm glad you brought that up because I have my notes here. We don't have the money to, to do this. This is, I have to come out of the street department, it's not a utility of any kind. So we have to go into our fund balance, which would be your savings. And we always have to have money set aside. And so this, this money will come out of that. Um, and those are all things going forward that we need to be, be looking at because we don't have funds set aside for water projects.
The good news is.
That's what we'll be coming from and it will be part of a budget amendment as well.
The good news is, is that we had it there.
Yeah.
Thankful for that.
I know you too.
Two, three years ago. So that's a, that's a, I mean, I wanted to make sure everybody understands where we're, this is coming from.
Out of the general fund in the street department.
That's correct.
But it's gotta come from somewhere.
Gotta come from somewhere. The good news is we got it right now. I remember when we don't, you can too, Mike. All right, next we got is the bid award for FEMA professional services.
And Mayor Commissioners, I know we talked about, there are some opportunities for get, us to get some monies reimbursed for projects for FEMA and TEMA. And it's a very detailed process, which we are not experts in. And we went to, to the Office of Emergency Management for the county, like three or four months ago, and, and asked how they submitted all the paperwork that's necessary. And they said they work with an outside contractor to do that. And the contractor that has bid on this is who they work with. And so we put it in the paper, it was open for bids and this is the only bid. We worked with them on a small scale because we were under the dollar amount needing your approval. But in case this gets to be over $10,000, we want to have your approval that we can work with this for emergency management funding. It's a, it's very detailed work. I mean, they, they know what the federal government will pay you back for a backhoe, depending on the size of the, the claw. Every, every different size of the equipment pays a different amount per hour. It's their area of expertise that we don't have.
And I don't know if y'all remember the bid, but we had it the last Wednesday night and it was a very detailed bid too, as well as there were different prices, there were different prices for different type work. So that's good to see. I mean, it's.
And these are their prices. They've been doing it for 30 years and then they know all the prices of what FEMA and TEMA will reimburse.
That's right. So that's, that's even better. We're going with somebody knows what they're doing. And know what's reimbursable. Even better.
They also included the, the fact that they, we can actually get reimbursed for their fee. Yeah, and the, and the, you know, the rewards that we get from them. So basically, um. If it was in front, yeah, we could get it back.
Okay.
We'd be, we'd be reimbursed for a portion of it, a good amount.
Yeah. All right. Did I do a motion on it?
Yeah.
All right, entertain a motion on the bid award for FEMA professional services.
I make a motion to accept award for FEMA professional service.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We've had no one sign up to speak tonight. And, uh, so I'll go around the floor right quick. Mike, you got anything else?
No, sir, we do.
Ms. Willie?
Yes.
Mr. Eric? Thanks to those that helped. I don't know if y'all have seen it, but Tennessee Valley Weather, Ben Luna and the guys, they installed a camera. They had a camera way up under, so you can go and watch Mount Pleasant at night or during the day, uh, watch the live feed and it looks great.
Try to get them to get some stuff on the picture.
Yeah.
And Eric, I did mention to Pete that he called me back yesterday and he didn't get it.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, there's something I wanted to ask. Probably not important if I had already got. Oh, no, it's real important. What is it? I think Ms. Willie's one brought it up, but where are we on this pest control thing? Has anybody done anything? I mean, where are we? I mean, Steve spoke up and said it wasn't good where he was.
Well, when you brought it up on Thursday, I said that I would bring it up at our Lusia meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
And ask everybody, I mean, bids awarded. And if I get more reports like Steve says, we'll go to the vendor and say we're not happy.
Okay. That's all we can do right. We gotta take the next step because we can't have that.
It can be canceled anytime.
And if you remember, when we signed it, it could be at our discretion. It was part of the contract.
It's in the contract. I don't remember. I'd have to go back and.
It's in there.
Yeah, I remember that.
I distinctly remember it.
The reminder of Friday lunch and free hall be closed or offices will be closed for a little bit to, for anybody to come over to feast.
Be soon. Thank y'all again for doing that. With that being said. That's quick. Thank you, Mike. Second, all those in favor? Aye, we out of here. Thanks, everybody for coming.